Let's call this meeting in order. All right, we're going to do roll call after the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Verfo, do you want to pray?
Sure. Father, we're just so thankful for your presence in our lives. God, I just pray blessings over this meeting tonight. Guide our decisions, Lord. Help us to hear you clearly. And I just pray for our Community Day, that you would bring us peace and unity. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. We have her on the spot praying every time. Maybe we should shift that around.
First of all, you act like it's on the spot when you ask.
Well, yeah. Roll call.
Casey.
Yes, ma'am.
Jeff.
Here.
Dawn.
Here.
Debbie.
Here.
Kyle.
So we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is the consent docket. You've reviewed the information in the consent docket. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve consent docket.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Any questions?
Casey, are you up?
I'm up. I thought that I was. It kicked me out. Give me just one second, guys. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Showing off that, your pictures over there got you distracted. Commissioner Ver.
I was reviewing the agenda at home. I was disconnected from the whiffy. It's a problem.
Wait. Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is any public comment. Do we have anyone here that would like to comment on anything? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next. The next item on the agenda is to discuss or take action on poolside concepts to fix the pool flooring at the cost of $58,653.25. Would you like to comment on that?
I'll open up the discussion, Mr. Mayor. As commissioners are aware, we've had some issues with the flooring in our pool. You signed a contract in 2017 to have a number of issues repaired in the aquatic center. And one of those was the pool liner. And since I've been here since July, we've had a number of discussions with Lambert Construction, who were your primary construction company. Most recently, we had a discussion with him. And we brought in a pool expert that probably should have been counseled with or brought in when you first did this work, you know, about four years ago. The plaster, the pool, it's got a plaster liner in it. And as the pool expert will tell you, Liz Pierce, plaster pools should be replaced between 12 and 15 years. Our pool is going on 26 years. What they basically did several years ago was they just put a paint epoxy over the existing plaster pool. What's being proposed in my memo that I shared with you on Friday and with the cost breakdown we've got is to take out all the old plaster and put in a whole brand-new plaster pool for the amount of money. Ironically, it's, we paid about $60,000 to have it painted several years ago. I've been in discussion with Lambert Construction. He was present last week when we had the meeting. I offered to settle all the disputes with him if he'd just pay half of this cost and then we'd pick up the other half. And he told me to visit with their bond counselor, their insurance company. And so I instructed the city attorney to do that. He reached out to me again today, wanted to know what our status was. I told him I'm planning on putting in brand-new plaster and proceeding ahead. His estimate to repair what's damaged there now is about $12,000. And that's all he's willing to put into it right now. Now, depending on what Brandon has with their insurance company, we may get a little bit more. My recommendation is, I think we've horsed around with this thing long enough and we just need to get her done. Liz Pierce with the poolside concepts is here. Liz, if you want to come up. Brandon, you want to come up? Brandon got to the city shortly after this project was just about complete. So he's been dealing with it. He can answer any specific questions you may have. He brought some of the plaster, the paint-plaster combination that's in the pool now. But I think our unanimous recommendation from the administration is to get this work done correctly. The pool is absolutely drained now. It's been drained for a week. And Liz's firm is ready to do the work immediately. I mean, they're ready to go to work during the holidays so we can get it done and reopen it in January. So Brandon, I don't know if you or Liz, who wants to start? I've kind of given an overall feeling of...
Why don't we let Brandon start since...
He's the aquatic director.
Yeah, the ball was initially started with him and then I came into the picture.
So I got, I'll start. Thank you, guys, for everything. But I got pieces of the floor, of the pool floor, and I also have a video I sent to Jim. I'm having a hard time getting it to upload, but I have a video of the pool floor as it is right now. So just pass that around. You can see that this is the plaster with the epoxy and the plaster on the bottom that's actually coming up off the bottom of the pool floor. At any point in time I say something, you can stop me because you were here through the process as well. I started with the city in September of 2018, right at the end of the renovation process of the aquatic center. We reopened the aquatic center in January of 2019. And by April of 2019, we had already shut down and drained the pool because the pool floor was coming up in sections like that the first time. Lambert came out, we drained the pool, Lambert came out, did a patchwork. I have pictures of the patchwork that they did, which is eerily the same, in my opinion, the same exact, some of the same exact spots that are coming up now. We had, so when they came out, redid, did some patchwork. Fast forward a year into 2020, we shut down in COVID in 2020. January of 2020, we noticed that there were some spots that were coming up again. We had to shut down for COVID in 2020. So we thought it would be a great time to drain the pool. I will do the patchwork myself. We got the supplies paid for through Tenemic, who is the company that painted, did the epoxy, put the paint stuff on the floor. I repaired a spot on the floor and to this day, that spot has not, has not come out. I'm not saying I'm a pool expert. I followed the directions from Tenemic, what they gave me. Although it is a very, very small spot, I was able to repair the floor. We repaired the spot and I want to say probably January of 2021, there was more spots that became defective, as you can see. And obviously, it's been an issue ever since. The thing I have, the issue I have is Lambert Construction's already been asked to come out here once to repair the pool floor. They didn't do the job. They didn't do it in the first place. Listen, I get it, the pool, we can sit here and talk numbers, talk money, whatever. If we want a facility that we can promote on a daily, monthly basis, we've got to do the right thing and get this thing fixed the right way. This is a, this is a liability. There's cut feet, all kinds of stuff from this. And it's something that we've got to really look into to get fixed. And a patchwork's not, and she can go into more of the patchwork. I'm not a pool, again, I'm not a pool expert. The patchwork's not going to work. Outside of the areas that you can see that have come up, that I've pulled up, that we have all seen, there's also spots in the pool where the, where the plaster is starting to wash away underneath the epoxy. And it's just a matter of time before that starts cracking. So, I mean, that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Like I said, this is something that we've asked Lambert to fix in the past. They didn't do a very good job. And I don't, from the meetings that we've had, I don't trust that they will, they will do the right thing this time. I don't.
I have a couple of questions for you. So we built that pool in what year?
1997.
We built the pool in 1997? And then we renovated it. So we built it for what, $2.5 million? Is that about right?
Close to that.
In '97? We invested another $2.5 million in 2018, about, 2019? As far as what the renovation consisted of, it did not consist of replastering the pool? It was really dedicated specifically to HVAC? Is that correct?
Most of it was because when we deferred to the first bids, they were way over. So we went back out for the second bid. And most of that bid was to take the condensation out of the building. Because the condensation was tearing up the building because there was no humidifying, humidifiers in there to soak up all that humidity that was in there between the water and the air. So most, like 1.1 million, I think, was obligated to the system, the HVAC system, is what it was. This was like an afterthought. It was an alternate, exactly what it was, on the list.
So...
There was some roofing work that was done.
Right.
They put some insulation in the ceiling to make it control the heat in the summer and make it warmer in the, in the winter.
Who was our consultant? Was it our standard?
Yes.
So they're, they were the pool experts supposedly? So, interesting, okay.
Counting engineering, yeah.
And so have they done pools before?
No.
Okay. But...
They put the specs together. There was a bunch of specs to it, you know? So it was all, you know, how it is. And so, like I said, that was an alternate because there was money left over. So that's how that came into play to redo the pool.
But they didn't really, I guess, I'm curious, from a pool perspective, they really were just trying to address the issues that you brought up? They didn't do an evaluation of the facility or anything like that? And were they qualified to do that?
Now, that I can't answer because it was above me. I just came in on the bottom of it.
I wasn't here yet.
Okay.
So, can't answer that.
But plaster was not included? Basically, we painted, we epoxied it?
No. So basically, I think in the alternate, it said go to the smooth surface, if I'm correct. I'd have to go back and look at exactly how it said it. So that pool was sandblasted and then painted. So basically, in the alternate, they didn't understand smooth. Maybe that didn't mean take off the plaster. That didn't mean, you know, whatever. I don't know how they took it, but the way they're telling us is they took it not to take the plaster off and not go to smooth. So they thought it was smooth over the plaster and that's how they painted it.
However, however, as somebody stated here, plaster should be replaced.
Yes.
Right.
At certain, at certain intervals.
Exactly. So that was never looked at. No, that was never ever looked at.
Another question for you. Lambert Construction was the GC on this. Did they, did they have pool experience? Did they have pool experience or...
According to them, yes, they did.
They did? And so they, they self-performed that work? That was not something that they subbed out?
They subbed that out.
They did sub it?
They subbed it out.
With a painter, that's a commercial painter, but does, is not a professional pool painter. And that is, that is something that Mark Lambert himself told Brittany and I that we have on, on a recorded meeting, that he said that the painter that was there is a commercial painter, but he is not a professional pool painter.
Because he is Sherwin-Williams painting. He's the best painter.
Well, you said Tenemic, though. Tenemic is...
Yeah, they used, they got, didn't they get bids from Tenemic and Sherwin-Williams? They ended up using Tenemic.
But they used Sherwin-Williams. And you passed it with Tenemic?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
But, but there was a resin applied to the paint.
That's what they're saying they use to firm up. That's why that, you got part of the floor there. You've got a shiny coat of paint.
Yeah.
Tenemic is just cement spelt backwards and they use a cement product in there, I believe. So I assume that paste is derivative of some kind of, but anyway, I was just curious. That gives us a little bit of a basis, I think, that maybe not all of us, and I sure wasn't aware of, so.
The only other thing that needs to be added is the superintendent that managed this job for Lambert Construction is, has passed away.
He actually passed away before we reopened, January 19th of 2019.
Okay.
So, you know, trying to get a historical perspective of how this whole project went about, it was hard. And then Dave has gone, you know, the city manager at the time. There was discussion from Lambert that, you know, Dave said, "Just put lipstick on it," you know, and, but...
Always easy to blame the guy that's gone, right? Yeah, so, yeah, okay.
You had mentioned that depending on the insurance through Lambert that we may receive some money on the back end. Did, have you reviewed their warranty or their insurance coverage?
Well, his last comment to me today, he called me, and I'm assuming he called me after Jared had left a message with their insurance company. And he says, "Jim, I'm willing to put $12,000 in." And I says, "Well, Mark, that's not enough," you know? "But if you want to fight this thing, I'm giving you an opportunity to settle this thing out of court, you know, without getting lawyers involved." He's just not willing. He wants to do a $12,000, you know, patch job. And he was present on Wednesday when Liz was there. And Liz shared with him the cost breakdown that I sent to you over the weekend. And I think he was a little startled because it's less than what we paid for the work that was done
in the first place.
In the first place. And I think he's upset about that. And I said, "Well, Mark," I said, "You really should have gone and got somebody to be an expert to look at the pool instead of just painting over what's already there." But that's hindsight. And, you know, we all have Hines and we all look behind us.
So then, Ms. Leslie, your, your poolside company, then you guys specialize in aquatics? And it's like you specialize in pools?
Absolutely, absolutely.
You work on the ones that are this size often, commercial?
So I've been in the swimming pool business for 25 years now. So the majority of what I do is renovation remodel work. I've done some new construction along the way. But I've always really mainly focused on the remodeling. Mainly because when someone has a pool, and kind of the magic number is about 10 years. So a normal residential pool is about 10 years before it needs to be replastered, on average. Now, you can push that to close to 15 years if they're really maintaining and keeping the water balanced and just really taking care of that pool. So, and what happens is, a lot of times when they, there's several reasons why the plaster, which is white Portland cement and crushed marble dust. That's what that material is, okay? And so you've got the gunite shell of the pool. And then you come in and you put this waterproof coating on it, which is the plaster, all right? But it's naturally going to age over time. As the years go by, it's underwater, it's in chemicals, you know? Not really...
It breaks down.
It just, it breaks down just like anything else. But it is underwater, so it's going to go faster, you know? So that's your standard white marble plaster. When it comes to a commercial pool, then you can expect that lifetime to even lessen because you have more activity in the pool. You have, you know, you're shocking the pool more often, just a lot of different reasons. Just in my experience, you know, you've got maintenance people that, you know, were around for five years and then they hire somebody else. And so you've got all these different people coming in. And let's say over 20 years span of time, well, the last guy doesn't know, you know, maybe he knows what he's doing, but the other guys didn't. And so you have all these, these, these moving parts that dictate how long that plaster finish is going to last.
So will we be looking in another decade at another $60,000 to redo this process?
I would say, I would say probably, it depends on what material you go with, okay? So I'm just going to talk about the standard white plaster because that's what I've given you a price for, okay? So I would say if you are, stay on top of your chemicals and get those boilers checked because that'll also break down if you've got... So typically, if a heater, the pool is being heated and there's any kind of iron coming into the pool, that'll also break that plaster down faster. And I did see signs that you've got areas of the pool, and I've got pictures of all this. I'm just not tech savvy enough to put it up there, but I get it. But, but I see areas of the pool where there's rust coming through on the walls, okay? And so that's also, that rust that's coming through and bleeding out, it's, I mean, it's come through the plaster and through two paint jobs. I understood this pool has been repainted or painted twice, okay? So the same thing will happen with black algae. I mean, so you, but it's coming through. We've got to get that dealt with. So, and chisel all those problems out so it doesn't affect your new plaster job because you're going to invest a lot of money on a new plaster job. So we have to come in and address and treat all that rust, which is coming basically from either rebar ties or exposed rebar underneath the plaster. And the plaster itself, the original plaster finish is very weak and porous. If we go do a site visit, I can show you. I mean, it's, it's very brittle. And, and when the plaster is in that condition, it takes more chemicals to keep it from turning green, okay? So it's getting more, you know, as far as the chemicals go, it's just, the plaster is just breaking down. And it, I mean, it can eventually just break down and you just start, you know, losing water in the pool because it's coming through to the shell of the, I mean, I could go on and on. I'm about to helping people, okay?
So question for you, as far as the iron, is that a problem with our water source? Or do we have issues with our pipe network bringing it into the pool?
So the, no, the problem that I saw was...
The rebar?
Was the rebar bleeding through.
Okay.
And that will be, that would have never been able to be addressed with a simple paint job.
For sure, for sure.
Okay? You've got to have, you've got to have skilled people that do this, that know pools and know how to treat that, okay?
Does this anticipate any issues with the steel itself? As far, I mean, do you have any repairs to the steel forecasted into your price?
I didn't, I mean, once we start the demo work, if I see any, like, a lot of times, I can, because this pool has paint on it, so it's, it's almost somebody put a Band-Aid on a pool that needs to be replastered. So we could potentially unearth maybe a crack in the shell or something like that. That's not included, but even if that comes to...
I guess the steel's actually in the gunite, right?
Yes, absolutely. So even if, let's say, for example, nine times out of 10, when I have to do what's called a crack repair on the shell of the pool itself, you'll usually see a crack that starts somewhere at the top of the wall and it will bleed down to the floor. And I can't see that because it has this special paint on it. So once we start digging in and getting all this stuff out, I may see... And how we deal with that is we open up that crack and then we shoot a, we do an epoxy injection into that crack. And then if the crack is large enough, then I come in and put steel pins with hydraulic cement to close up and keep that crack together, okay?
Stitch it, basically.
Exactly, exactly. So, you know, it's...
Liz, how long do you anticipate this work to take?
The guys are telling me they could be in and out in two weeks. I mean, I have, I have the people. This is a large, this is a really large pool, guys. It's going to take a mag, I mean, you can't even imagine the labor that's involved in here. But they'll get after it. I mean, we're going to send 25, 30 guys out here and just get going on it. And once that's done, then you acid wash it. And then we put the bond coat down. The bond coat looks something like this on this pool. It's a dark brown material and that's what is going to bond. It bonds to the shell, all right? And your new plaster is going to bond to that, okay? When you're building a new pool, you don't have to do this step because the plaster bonds just fine to the new shell, okay? To the gunite, all right?
I have a question about the texture of the new that you're putting down. How is that going to compare? Because, I mean, we've experienced a cut seat.
I know, it's terrible.
So this will be what we'll be dealing with instead then?
Well, on the, so you have, you have an area of the pool, I like, I like to call that the beach entry where you're just, it's a very shallow part of the pool where it has a little bit of water coming across, but not very much. So it was suggested by the plaster to put the, the small pebble plaster in that area because it's, because plaster needs to be underwater or else it's going to crack, okay? So that's a very shallow part of the pool that has very little water in it. So the advice is to put the stronger plaster, this is a stronger plaster.
Shallower water.
Right there in the shallow water. And then we'll come in with the rest of the pool and we'll use the, the smooth, it'll be as smooth as glass, the whole pool. And, and then he's also agreed to, if you want it, to add some blue quartz to that plaster mix. It's not really giving you any more strength or durability, but it's more for aesthetics. So the plaster is mixed on the truck, okay? And they add that blue quartz in and...
Does it take away from the strength or durability?
No, it does not.
Doesn't affect the product?
No. Now, if you want, it'll cost a little bit more money to put the good stuff in. Now this, what you have, this is Quartzscapes. Now, this is a higher grade of Portland cement. It's 100% quartz. Quartz is very, very strong. And so it has polymers and polypsins to really strengthen up that cement and keep it from bleeding or fading and all that stuff. But my plaster is certified to install this product. Not everybody is. This plaster has a 10-year warranty behind the material, okay? Roughly, I left my, I printed it out, but I left it on my printer before I got here. But I did work the numbers just in case you guys wanted to look at a longer-term option. It's going to cost more money for this stuff, okay? Roughly 20.
What you, what you provided was, so the product material is a 10-year warranty? And your labor and materials are a two-year warranty? I believe I read a two-year warranty.
So labor and materials on the white plaster that I've quoted you for, that's two years, labor and materials, okay? Most, most pool builders on a commercial pool, they're only going to give you one year. I've, I mean, I'm really trying to help you guys because I feel really bad. You've got a huge pool that has a big problem. So I'm willing to give you the other year, okay? And normally how warranties work is if I have a pool, it's very, very rare that we have a warranty where I come in and replaster a pool. But if that situation arises, normally what'll happen is my plaster will come in and provide the materials to replaster the pool and I'll help him with the labor. So that's how warranties work, okay? But this plaster here, he's certified, lifetime, lifetime. This is a 10-year plaster material here, but he's certified with them. So in other words, he's, he's approved if something goes wrong with this.
How much does our cost go up if you do that?
$20,000.
$20,000, oh, yeah.
Because it's, it's a much more durable material. And it's, I would say, I do quartz plaster. And it's, I would say, I do quartz plaster. There's even more expensive plaster out there, but you guys don't need that. But I do, I do probably, out of all the pools that we do, this quartz plaster that I'm talking about is probably about eighty percent of my business. The other twenty percent white. And every once in a while, I'll have somebody that wants to really spend some money and put the pebble with glass and all that stuff. But you guys don't need all that.
Curious, oh, I'm sorry.
It's just, it's just a more durable finish that holds up against all these chemicals and just, you know, the work. This is just, which is why he wants to put this, it's a stronger plaster right there where it has very little water running across it, okay? You gotta get a strong material that's gonna hold up better there. And you're fine with the white plaster on the pool. But if you're wanting to find some money in the budget to get something more durable for the whole pool, that's the way to go right there.
Curiosity, Brandon and Jim, nothing against Liz, I don't know Liz, never met her till tonight. But I assume, I guess, before I get to these guys' questions, and others may have questions too, but I just had a brain spasm. Question for you two, references, have you checked any of the work that she's done? Have you, have you gone out and seen anything that they have repaired? Have you done, I assume she could provide those to you?
Absolutely.
Talk with people that have, that she has done work for?
We've looked at the reviews on the internet and you've got good reviews on the internet.
That's me, I know, yeah.
I haven't, I haven't checked references.
You reviewed yourself?
No, I said that because I, I've met a, I've met a lady a couple of weeks ago and she goes, "So you're Liz, the one I keep reading about all over the internet?" And I said, "That's me."
I was just curious.
So John reached out to her through his contacts, people, and John got the first meeting with all of us set up. And then, what, he came back, what was it, Wednesday or Thursday, and everything kinda happened fairly quickly. So to answer your question, I have not, other than what Jim has done, no.
So, my other question was, so do you self-perform, your company self-performs this work?
So my plaster, he plasters, he's actually a subcontractor of mine, but he does every single pool. We have like a relationship like this. He plasters pools for about five builders and that's, that's par for the course in this business.
And he was out here Wednesday.
He came Wednesday to see him. He wanted to see firsthand what he was-
The magic is, is finding, when it comes to subs, finding the right ones, okay? Cherry pick the right ones and then your business is gonna run smooth. And you have the, the, the one-on-one working, good working relationship with them. And then if anything happens, they're more than happy to jump through hoops to come fix it and things like that.
I just wanna get back into this that we're into now. So I, I, I would, I would like to at least get some references, see what, see what she's done. Not to slow things up, I'm not wanting to do that, but I don't wanna get back into this same, same situation personally.
I agree. I mean, I, I don't paint pools because of what you guys are experiencing now. And I have pictures and videos of painted pools that we've taken care of and turned them around. But this is a, from, from what I've seen walking around this pool, I mean, this is a typical thing that I see on swimming pools that have had paint on them. It's just a big pool that needs to be dealt with the right way and you need the right people to deal with it.
Mayor, I, I don't have a problem doing some reference checks. I, I would hope that because we've got the pool drained, that subject to getting good references and verifying, you know, the quality of her work, that we could go ahead and proceed.
Yeah.
So if, if you're comfortable with that and if we make a motion. As far as a ten-year warranty, I, I don't know what to say about that, you know? For an extra twenty thousand dollars, you get a ten-year warranty that if anything goes wrong-
That's right.
They come out, you know, and in some respects, that's kinda like an insurance policy. I talked to-
You're talking another thirty percent in cost though, another upgrade, that's quite a little bit in regards to this, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Well, there was one other thing that I caught on whenever Ms. Leslie was speaking to us. She was speaking about the, the rust problem coming through and that being rebar. But I also caught, you said something about boilers and making sure that there wasn't a problem with boilers. We need to have an inspection of our facility done to make sure that there's not under-
I need to make sure that your new plaster that you're gonna be spending money on is not gonna get affected. So when I walk around the pool and I see these, these grates, these drains around the whole perimeter of the pool and they have this, this green oxidat, oxidation on them. That's, that's from iron in the air. I know it's an enclosed pool and whatnot, but you've got iron floating around. But I, if it was my pool, I would for sure, 'cause you're gonna be heating this pool. So I would get the boilers looked at to make sure they're not leaking any irons.
We've had, we have a contract, a, a contract with Air Technologies, is that it, right?
Maintenance agreement.
Maintenance agreement with Air Technologies. And he's been out, more than Mark Lambert's been out to work on our boilers. And I, I didn't realize it until, speaking with Brittany, that the boilers were never changed. So the boilers that are in there have been in there in the building a quite a long time.
So they're, they're original boilers?
I don't know if they're their original.
They were never re-painted.
Okay, so yeah, they're the original boilers.
Because they work and they're still working. Now, did we do things to them? Yes, we did.
Yeah.
We, we maintenance them.
But he, but Dan with Air Technologies, who's a, who's a great guy, I mean, he would shoot straight with us because he's just done this with the city of Kingfisher forever, has told me the last few times that he's been out that we need to look into new boilers. And it's just evident in what she says, you know? A lot of this stuff you can see whenever the pool is drained, but when there's water running through, you can't, you can't, you don't catch on to any of that till it's drained. Like I was telling, well, Brittany and I, Brittany even walked, walked in the other day and was like, "This is a hundred times worse than what I thought it was when there's water in it." And it's, and that's the case. Until you go down there and see it and walk out on it, it's, it's, you can look at it from the, the pool deck when there's water in it, but when there's water drained, it's like, this isn't good.
Out of curiosity, I don't wanna chase this rabbit too long. There continues to, to be other issues that pop up with this. And, and we've had some, some interesting debates in regards to the pool over the time that I've been on the commission. But what would boilers, to replace the boilers?
I have not even started looking at that because I haven't even talked to Jim about it until she verified with us last week that-
Could we check into that just out of curiosity?
Could I ask a question? Why, I mean, do you necessarily have to heat this pool?
Yes.
Yes. Run here, here around.
We're gonna market correctly. I mean, we, that's another issue that I'm wondering. We're talking if we add another twenty and then if we have to replace boilers and we already know what that pool is bringing, you know, costing right now. If we're not gonna market that pool correctly, then are we just spinning our wheels here? Because, I mean, should we even open it up?
And I'll, I'll say something on that. And I've told some of you this, I know I've told you and I've know I've had in-depth conversations with Kyle about this because him and I have butted heads over this several times. When I started in twenty eighteen and the pool reopened in twenty nineteen, there's probably been one time that that thing hasn't, there's not been one thing wrong with that pool for a six-month period. I'm fighting something every single day of the week, including the pool floor, whether it be the boilers, whether it be the pool pack that runs the air ventilation. And the problem is with the, with the pool pack is it's a train product. And so train is the only one, the only people that will even touch it. Their mechanics, their people, they're the only ones that will come out and work on it. They since have moved their facility from somewhere in the US to Canada. So getting parts to, to repair the pool pack to keep the airflow in and out of the building is a nightmare. So what I'm trying to say is, is I, I agree a hundred percent with the marketing. But me personally, I'm not gonna market that place if I have a crappy product down there that, that's cutting people's feet. Why, why would I want to, why would I wanna market a place when, when all people do is bitch about it when they come down there?
Well, here's my question then. Since you have been the person there since all this stuff has been going on, why is it that you haven't had people come do inspections and bring-
We do, we have inspections, we have, I mean, we have-
Okay, let me finish.
Okay, go ahead.
My question is, it seems that, y'all are mentioning that the boilers, you've been told several times that they probably need to be replaced yet. Why do we not have that, where you have brought that to the city to say, "Okay, they need to be replaced"? Or then even this situation where you're the one that's the contact person that's been consistent, yet, so it's been on you to say, "We're gonna keep repatching it or not, no matter what expertise."
I had a conversation with Kyle McEnver at a basketball game.
I'm not done. So what I'm saying is, you've been the contact person this whole time. You're, you have a lot of complaints, but you've been the go-to person to change those complaints. So what has stopped you from doing so? Now I'm done.
Okay. No, okay, so first off, and that's a great question. I had a, I had a conversation with Kyle McEnver after Dave resigned and told him I had, I had a big issue with not knowing what was going on with the pool floor. Because I was left completely out of the loop on all of it after I brought it to, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here and throw people under the bus, but I brought it to people's attention that there, there needed to be something done with the pool floor. And here we are two years later having, having an issue about it. Okay, I, I've said, I've said in, in, in meetings with other commissioners that have, have completely complained about the amount of money that that pool i- is costing the city on a year. Why would I want to, to continue to bring up things that are gonna cost twenty, thirty thousand dollars?
So it could be done.
I agree. No, no, I, I agree. I, I agree. But, but that, and that's not just me, I mean, it's, it's other department heads that feel the same way about this kinda stuff. So I'm just telling you that I know that you guys will listen. I, I've never stood up here and, and asked for anything. Ask Brittany, I've never stood in front of, in, in front of the commissioners and asked for money even in, in when we're doing our, our budgets.
That's what I'm saying. I think that's the problem.
Right.
You have it.
Right, no, I know. And I, I agree, I agree. But now I have people that will actually listen and, and understand that this thing needs to be done and this stuff needs to be done. This pool floor has been an issue for two years.
Yes, it's been longer than that, actually.
My biggest concern here in regards to all this though is, so we have the floor, you know, and we know, we've known that was an issue, that was tied up with the contractor for a long time. Now we're hearing a little bit more about some stuff. How, how far do we chase this? I mean, how, how far? Because you may uncover all kinds of things. It's gonna significantly cost us even more than what this is. So that, that would be, that would be my only concern is, have we done a true assessment of what is absolutely needed to get this operational in a way that it's not gonna contribute to cost us a significant, significantly more money? That I, I don't know.
No, we haven't. And to spend sixty thousand dollars on, on the white plaster, whenever the pool expert is recommending and guaranteeing a product for ten years for an additional thirty percent over ten years, two grand a year for, for a better product. But then also still saying in that same breath, if you don't have the inspection done and the iron continues to be a problem and the boilers are maybe a problem and the humidifiers may be a problem, then this product is going to break down a lot faster. So we have a professional opinion saying you need to get these other things looked at and make sure they're not contributing to the problem. I don't wanna pull the trigger and say, "Hey, these are great numbers, let's go ahead and get this fixed. I hate that the pool is drained, spend the sixty grand, get it plastered and in two years, as soon as the warranty expires, it's breaking down, we have rust problems because we didn't do our due diligence in getting an inspection done first." We're getting in our own way.
Your, your thoughts, Jim, on any of that?
I, I guess Commissioner Taylor brings up some interesting points, you know, that for whatever reason, past commissioners, past city managers just haven't made it a priority. But my concern, and, and I'm the new kid on the block, the public voted twice. First to build the pool, it was a public referendum, and then the public came back and said, "Okay, we'll give you another two and a half million dollars to invest in this thing." And so then when I ask a simple question, I say, "Well, how much traffic does the pool get? And there's only thirteen family memberships." And I'm thinking, you know, when, when, when do we just say, "You know what, let's cut our losses," you know? Because I, I think she's absolutely correct. We, we need to do a better job marketing the aquatic center. We, we need to have family nights, we need to, I don't know, we put in volleyball courts outside or video games in the inside to get kids down there. Or we just need to say, "You know what, let's fill it in with sand and turn it into a basketball court," you know? Because to, if, if the public supported this thing in two public referendums and only thirteen families have memberships down there, I, I don't know where the disconnect is, you know? And somebody told me at one time, we did have a swimming team from the high school, now we don't have a swimming team. I mean, the, the few times, and I've been down there more since I got here, just trying to figure out what the problem is. There, there's a group of senior citizens that come in the morning. But other than that, it, it's just, it's a ghost town. So, I don't know, we, we're at a crossroads here. We, we've got to figure out, if this is an asset that the community truly wants, then we gotta get it fixed. We gotta get it operational, we gotta market it and promote it as, you know, a destination spot here in, in Kingfisher. Or we've gotta change its use, you know?
What's, what's, out of curiosity, what's a staff recommendation? Obviously, you have it on the agenda. What's a staff recommendation in regard to this? Hearing all, some of the concerns that the commissioners have brought up.
Well, you know, I, I firmly believe we need a new base to that pool. And fifty-eight thousand dollars is not a lot of money. You spent sixty thousand just painting it three, four years ago. So we need to get that done right. I think we do need to explore the boiler situation. And Brandon needs to make it a top, top priority to figure out a marketing plan, to communicate to the public. And, and maybe now that the public realizes that only thirteen families have memberships there, we're gonna have a huge outcry at the next meeting. You know, they're gonna say, "Maybe we don't need this asset." Because, you know, we are losing money on it. It's costing us three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars a year. And in a community of, of five thousand, that money could be spent in a number of other venues where, you know, we have other needs.
Clarify that, three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, is that specifically in regards to repairs? Or is that, does that include labor and people in land that?
Neither, that's, that's overall cost, isn't it? Labor, operations?
Fifty-eight thousand?
No, the three-hundred-and-sixty.
Like, what's the operation for them?
The pool actually doesn't, as I was looking at that today, the golf association uses about a hundred thousand a year. So part of it goes to golf.
Oh, that three-sixty-five?
That, that's transferred over, that three-hundred-and-thirty that's transferred over.
Okay.
About a hundred thousand of that or a little over goes to the golf. And a lot of that is chemicals used on the golf course which have just rebuilt it up.
Personnel, we've cut the grass.
Personnel goes, are all built through parks.
Parks.
We put them all through parks. So that's just chemicals and equipment for the golf course, that's that hundred thousand.
So we're talking two-sixty is what the pool?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry then.
My, my thought would be if, for, I agree that we definitely need to fix it because it is a hazard and it has been. And that number is, is a cute little number. But my thought is kinda similar to, you know, I, I, well, I feel like Casey was leaning towards, don't we wanna have the better product, but we don't wanna necessarily spend more on the better product if there's other at, things that are going to cause it to break down. So is there a way for us to table it so we can find out about the cost of those other things? So then we can kind of maybe figure out if we want to do the more expensive one because therefore the boilers might not be that expensive to replace? Or then we'll know if the boilers are, you know, need this and they're gonna be that much, then we know, oh, no, we're gonna stay with that. You know what I'm saying? Like, should we do that first? So then we kinda-
My, my dilemma is the pool's drained.
Yeah.
And Christmas is coming. They have a crew that can come in and get this thing done between now and the holidays. The boiler issue is gonna be a big issue.
Okay.
I don't know if it'll be as expensive as the HVAC system. Uh, I don't know if it'll be as expensive as the HVAC system, um, but, and I haven't looked at the boiler, I mean, I.
It's not gonna be, it won't be as much as this project is.
Yeah, I mean, the pool holds two hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons of water. So that boiler is heating that much water.
There's two boilers.
Oh, there's two boilers?
There's two boilers to that, I'm like.
But it has.
The boilers? I mean, I can call Dan.
We just need, whoever has the contract with this needs to price this brand-new ones, is basically what they're gonna have.
If they're original boilers, they're twenty-six years, they're twenty-six years old.
Yeah, they're, we're probably gonna have to replace them. I'm not gonna beat around the bush here.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
They're gonna probably have to be replaced. And if that is causing the green film or the green, the iron coming through, that's something we need to look at. And that's probably where to start. Who maintenance them's now, who maintenance them now could give us a cost estimate on those probably to what it's gonna cost us to replace those?
If we're gonna fix your facility and give you a marketable facility, and we're gonna keep it, and we're gonna continue to invest in it, then we need to make sure that we're doing it correctly.
Liz, you know, you mentioned hardened water, and I've got hardened water at my house, so I have a water softener, and maybe some of the commissioners do have water softeners as well. Do pools have water softeners?
No. That'll tear up your plaster.
That'll tear up your plaster.
So if someone has a, um, like even salt pools.
Yeah.
Um, it'll, it'll break that plaster down.
Okay.
So if you're mixing the plaster and doing the application with soft water, um, it's just gonna fall apart.
Yeah, okay. Cause I, I, I know this is some hardened water, I, I've lived all.
That's good, that's good for the pool. Hard water is good for the pool.
Trying to wash your hair.
I know, I know. Trust me, I've got hard water at my house too. Um, what I would like to know is if, if there's a way, hindsight is twenty-twenty, right? We, we should have taken a sample of the water before it was drained. Is there any way to get a sample of that water?
The actual water?
It's in the pool?
It's, see, we can't do it.
No, the pool's drained.
See, we can't do it.
Yeah.
So, um.
Oh, you, you wanna do an analysis of the water?
Correct. Because if those boilers, one or both or all none, uh, if they're leaking irons into that water, it's gonna show up on the floor. And that would've been a way to tell.
So let me ask this question, just thinking of that. I mean, I don't think iron is gonna destroy in a matter of days. Probably destroys it over a course of time.
Correct.
We could take, i- if in fact we said, hey, let's go ahead and replaster this, we could take samples of that as we're bringing in water and heating it, and then determine from that standpoint.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. The only reason I was thinking about it was just cost-wise, not, like, I get that it won't destroy anything, still having them there. But I'm kinda leaning towards like, do we, you know, do we wanna do the extra? So that it has, you know, it's got that better quality. You know, we, because we're, we're doing our plannings for twenty-thirty, you know, and all that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
We're, so I'm thinking, do we wanna do the extra so that we have that covered? And that's something that's guaranteed for the next, you know, group of people and everything like that? And they won't have that worry. But then if we have a big chunk coming, and we already know that the boilers are coming, you know, does that mean we don't wanna do the extra?
Yeah, that's one thing I would ask in regards to this. We know, just based upon what she presented, is that we need to, and, and we haven't done a very good job of this.
There might be even others.
But we're, we're gonna have to replace this every seven to ten years, more than likely.
I would say if you're, I mean, if you're not abusing the pool with chemicals, I mean, there's no reason, you, there's no reason whatsoever you can't get ten, anywhere from ten to fifteen.
Probably not twenty-six.
No.
That's my point, we're gonna have to replace it again.
Another thing that I did notice, if you walk around the pool, um, a lot of these areas that have, like, already, um, started popping up, if you ask me to come in and patch this, I'll bow down and walk away, cause I, I, this is continuing to grow, okay? It's not the way to fix this pool. But what I did notice was all of these areas that are looking like this, guys, all right? Just coming off in chunks. This pool, it has three separate bodies of water. You've got the diving area, okay, and that's pretty, pretty dig- deep. No one's standing on the floor, okay? So I don't see this going on over there. People walking around on this shallow side of the pool, that's where I see it. I see it right in front of the slide, when people are going down the slide, where's it at? Um, if people are coming down that slide and they land, I see all that, I'll see all that damage right there. So there's a lot of foot traffic, just continuing to cause this to get worse and worse. And the problem is, is once you have a crack in your plaster, I don't care if it has paint on it or not, but the water also has access to come and travel in between the layers and spread. All right, so the right way to fix this pool is to, to get all that stuff out of there and replaster it. I have not addressed lights, um, we have not addressed any lighting issues, you may or may not have. I'm gonna try to save the tile, um, uh, we're gonna come in and do a saw cut between the, cause you've got racing lines, you've got tile in different areas. So we're gonna do a saw cut and chip out all that plaster around and save that tile, cause that will bring more money to replace all that, um, all that tile, especially for those.
And there's no damage with the tile? The tile looked like it was in.
It looks to be okay. I can save the tile, no problem. Um, yeah, it looks to be, it's been down for a while, that's probably the original tile, if I'm gonna guess. So, um, I don't really. The type of company that you, you are, the type of structure that you are, is there, you know how there's like the BBB and all that for different companies? And there's like different associations, is there an association that's over your type of business? So, well, I'm a member of the Better Business Bureau with an A-plus rating, um, but, um, there's also.
She's proud of that.
I am, I am. I'm not a fly-by-night, you know, I'm an ex-banker, so it's like, I'm, a lot of people look at me and go, oh, she does, once I start talking, and they realize, oh, she does know what she's talking about. Um, but, I mean, I'm too young to retire, I'm too old to start something new. I've been doing this for twenty-five years, and, and, um, I've really enjoyed my years of doing this because I, I am a people person, and I do like the before and the after. I can take a pool and that's just a, um, a, a pool that was built thirty years ago and totally remodel it and bring it into today's world, what people are looking for. Sun shelves, adding sun shelves, adding a spa, or, or taking out a spa. Just all kinds of, and then with all the updated materials that we're using today. So, um, it's just kind of kept me so intrigued all these years, and it just makes me happy, the before and the after. If you're talking to a new pool builder, they, even if it's Blue Haven, we'll pick on Blue Haven, but if it's their pool that they built, um, and it fast forward in ten, fifteen years, and it's time to replaster that pool, um, they'll say, no, we, we only build new pools. They, they don't, even if it's their own pool, they will not come back and replaster it. Um, so, that's where I come in.
And your specialty is rehab.
What's that?
Your, your specialty is rehabbing them.
That's my specialty, but I know how to build a pool too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'm asking if you, there's an association, cause I'm curious if there's also other businesses that do, um, other inspections, and so we won't have to, like, what we keep saying, chase our tail, and we'll have, if you know of resources for us to find someone that knows what things to look for in an old, you know, like you said, haven't looked at lighting. We have boiling going on, the boilers going on, we got other things that we know have, not had any maintenance, so. Yeah, I was just curious if there's an association that goes, that kinda covers that everybody belongs to, that are reputable? Not, not that's gonna cover, you know, electrical and plumbing and, um, you know, it's, I mean, there is an association that's called the National Plasters Association. Yeah, for the plaster part, yeah. So, I mean, there's that, I mean, there's, um, there's guidelines that, um, you know, that you abide by for performing this work. The tiling coping around the edge of the pool, which you guys don't have, but, um, that's just straight-up masonry work. Um, electric, electrical is electrical, you know, get you a, uh, and I have, I mean, I have a, a source for bonded insured electrician to come in and look at electrical, and then the same thing with plumbing. You've gotta have, there's no, there's not one, one.
Overall.
Overall.
But wouldn't it be convenient if there was?
It would be.
We very much appreciate your presentation, for sure, and we, we had a lot of questions, obviously.
When I'm too old to do this, I'm gonna consult.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you so much, thank you, Brandon, thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Uh, I'd entertain a motion in regards to however you wanna make the motion.
Just remember, your budget comes up in March. So if you wanted to replace the boilers or any of that, that can always go on next year's budget, just remember that.
And I've checked with, Anita, there is enough money to cover this in the, uh.
In our current budget.
In our, well, in our current budget, but the, just, in the fund balance as it relates to, uh, this pool.
Good, okay.
Well, I make a motion that we approve to, um, Poolside Concepts to correct this pool, our floor.
At this current price of fifty?
At the fifty-eight, yeah.
Okay.
With the white dust plaster.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, she said she'd put in some cords too, yeah. We're throwing some cords. Do you want to, I'm just asking, do you want to amend that to say, hey, make sure we check references? Or you don't want to, that's what?
The, the BB, I mean, we're recording her, hopefully she didn't lie about the. You know, she's got an A-plus rating.
Just wanna make sure.
I will put you on blast, but, you know, that was good enough for me, yeah.
Just making sure.
Cause in Oklahoma, that's very rare for a business to even be with the Better Business Bureau.
We have a motion, do we have a second? And if we don't have a second, does somebody wanna make a motion to amend her motion? Whatever your pleasure.
I would make a motion to maybe get us, uh, to get a second bid, just one, just even just one more. Not to see if there's a better price, but my concern is that the company that we are fighting tooth and nail, and we've had so much problems with, like, charged us this exact same amount for, for a paint job. Um, and that either reflects very, very poorly on them, or we're looking at a market price that isn't, uh, reflective of the product that we need for a commercial pool. So I, I would like one more opinion. I feel like we haven't really talked to the experts, and we haven't sought multiple bids or multiple opinions in the past, and it's, it's biting us in the bottom right now. So I would, I would say that we maybe have one more person give their opinion on the condition and the product and the price, and then move forward from there, just like we did with the bathrooms. It's just due diligence.
Yeah.
So you're making the motion to approve it at this price with, so, so, with a second bid?
Yes.
Or like a price confirmation?
If.
Or valuation?
It, yes, if the value and the, and the product recommendation, the quality of the plaster lines up with the, with the second opinion, then yes.
So you're allowing?
Would you like an evaluatory?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Cause would you like an evaluation of the price, because you wanna go with this company and do this price? And you wanna know that this is the correct price? Or do you want us to actually seek out, cause it sounds like you don't wanna actually seek out another company? Cause we have a second opinion, that makes it seem like we're also seeking the services of another company to come in and give us, you know, their whole shtick. Or do you just want some service, like Jim, to run a price evaluation of these are the actual costs?
That's what I would ask too, as she would say, I mean, are you, are you doing it like, making the motion to accept this and for the staff to evaluate and seek a second bidder, and then evaluate from there?
Yes. I would say that we get a second bid, a second professional opinion on the resurfacing of the pool, the cost that's affiliated with it, the time that it's gonna take to do it, and, and the product that they would recommend that we use. Get two expert opinions and then decide from there, rather than just go with the, the very first one after all of these problems.
I'm looking for legal opinion at this point.
I'm, if, if that's the, this isn't legal opinion, this is just trying to think through it, put myselfs in a contractor's shoes. I think if that motion passes and you're, so you've moved to approve this, so long as we get second and then third, whatever bids, to make sure it all looks good, why is anybody else gonna bid on it?
Yeah.
Exactly, that's what I was, and I guess.
I, I think maybe what you're going after a little bit more is maybe where Jeff was kinda going, uh, maybe let's check around, see if we can just get an idea to make sure that looks good, if the price does look good. Cause like I said, I don't think anybody else is gonna submit an actual bid if they already know you've said, we're gonna go over here.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Right.
I'm, I'm sensing, Liz, they wanna know that this price is fair and reasonable for the product.
Right, no, I understand that.
How, how, can you give them any peace of mind?
Well, she told Brittany and I that we could go get three or four more bids if she wanted. She said that on Thursday, or Wednesday.
I always encourage people to go get, the magical term with the BBB is three, you know? That's the magical term.
Right.
Uh, but I could, I mean, and I do not have a problem with you going out and getting more bids.
I know, but the city attorney raises a good point. If we're, if we're awarding you the contract subject to staff going out and verifying that this is fair and reasonable, I'm, I'm like him, why would I submit a bid if, if you've already awarded it?
That's what I was thinking.
And I'm concerned about the timing.
The timeframe, because the pool is empty right now, so the longer it stays empty, pools are meant to have water in them, um, for many different reasons, but, um, you know, it really puts, um, strain on the shell of the pool when it's set, sits with no water in it. Um, and if this pool was outdoors, um, you have a chance of it popping up out of the ground because the ground table rises up too high and whacks or puts it up. Um, but, you know, I mean, the pool's empty, and it needs to be filled.
Let me bring this whole thing to a head, commissioners, cause I, I appreciate your concerns, and the mayor even raised it about checking references. I'm willing to put my good name on this recommendation, but that means, Liz, you better deliver.
I'm gonna look.
Do you understand what I'm saying? Yeah.
It's not even marked up that, I, I mean, it's not even marked up that much. I mean, to put it truly and honestly with you, I mean.
I mean, I'm gonna verify your references and that you are a triple A, uh, better business person, you know? I'll check your references, but I, I wanna get, keep this thing moving, you know? I, I appreciate everyone's concerns. I think Commissioner Taylor started out about the whole marketing, what, what have we been doing for two years? But I just got here in July, and, and, uh, so I'm gonna put my good name and my reputation behind your product. And, uh, we're gonna deliver what we said we're gonna deliver, and I'm gonna trust that your references. I mean, what I saw on the internet, it looked very positive, I mean, I didn't see anything bad, but.
Absolutely, yeah.
Uh, we'll verify that, and, uh, I, I would recommend that we proceed. I, I could see about getting another bid just to make sure, in my peace of mind, that this is fair and reasonable, cause I, I understand that, I deal with it all the time. Does that make sense to the commissioners?
So we still have, uh, Commissioner Taylor's motion, you somewhat?
I would argue that one.
That was gone, that was dead.
That's dead.
Right, exactly.
Okay, that was dead. She was starting to make a motion.
But she didn't get a second either.
Commissioner Fur. Well, I don't know that we ever got the full motion.
We didn't get the full motion.
Okay, so do we, so.
Well, I would, to add to the special for, for what Casey brings up too, I would say that there's a, there's a area of compromise that is possible right here because of the thought of the timeframe and the fact that Jim is recommending that we get this done over, over Christmas break and everything like that. And it's almost like looking at it like when you go to a ER with a kid, and, uh, maybe you don't necessarily know who this doctor is or like what he's, you know, something about him, but because it's a fix-it-now situation, sometimes you go ahead and let them fix it, you know? Um, because I do think we are fortunate enough where, you know, she does seem to, I totally agree about the fact that the reason we're in this situation is cause no one's done due diligence. People have lacked and, and dropped, so I get what you're saying, I do. But I also get that there's possibly a, a little gray area here for us to compromise on that due diligence.
So do you, do you wanna make that motion, Commissioner Taylor?
Well, I mean, Casey was still.
Casey, you wanna make a motion? I would entertain a motion from anyone.
So, so let me, let me say this back to Liz. She's right, the longer that pool stays empty, that's hard on this. So the longer we leave it empty, that's hard on that pool. So just emphasize, it will be. So, let's just think about that. I'm not trying to persuade you or anything. I'm just saying, the longer it's empty, that's harder on that pool.
Right. And can I say one more thing? The, I mean, look, I, I mean, five dollars is a lot of money to me. Um, so I understand the, the money aspect of things. Look what that guy charged you just to paint the pool, just put a band-aid. Right.
That was my point to him today.
Twenty-five guys in here, and.
Twenty-five guys in here and tearing all that stuff out, hauling it away. You know, it's, I mean, if you're looking apples to apples, unless you guys wanna call me back then.
We all do this.
And that's what I shared with Mark Lambert today. You know, I, I said, Mark, you know, there's egg on a lot of people's faces. And the city neglected some things, and so, anyway.
I don't think I spoke clearly. My concern wasn't with the, the dollar amount, because we painted more, we paid more to have it painted.
Right.
My concern was with having more than one professional opinion on how we needed to research it and what product we needed to use. Because it seems like Liz is recommending that we would use the stronger product throughout the pool and not just in the shallow end. But that's, and, you know, that's an additional thirty percent, as Mirko pointed out. But we're going into this kind of, kind of line, it's just, this is her recommendation, let's research it and let's use this. But I quoted you a lower product, and that's, that's really how she said it, too. I would do it like this, but I only brought you the numbers for the lower-end product. And we're considering to make a motion to use the lower-end product, and we have no, we have no inspection, got no idea what the boilers are doing, we have no idea about the iron leakage. According to Mr. Fraser, we've got problems with the HVAC and the train products and the ventilation. So like, let's go ahead and spend sixty thousand dollars on the lower-end product without having any other professional eyes on it and not having any idea whether or not it's gonna break down and.
So, so do you have a comment on that? Because I didn't hear quite that.
I was gonna say, yeah, it was a good quality.
Sure.
Okay, um, so I'm not discounting the, the standard white marble plaster whatsoever. I only mention that to give you options for a stronger plaster to possibly
And the stronger plaster has a ten-year warranty, right?
Right, ten-year warranty.
But the white plaster does not.
Has a two-year warranty.
Two years.
Yes.
Two years.
An eight, that's an eight, that's an eight-year warranty for two grand a year.
But that doesn't mean it's not going to break down in two years.
Here's what I would say, though, it's still a cement with marble dust, and the pounds per square inch, if you look at the compressive strength of that, you're not gonna see a significant difference. I wouldn't expect from your, when you say, say it's a ten thousand PSI product as opposed to five thousand, we don't have anywhere close to a five thousand PSI load on the, on the product. So I don't get, what I heard you say, Liz, and clarify me if I'm wrong, the white plaster with the marble dust, with some of the quartz mixed in that she said you'd throw in, would be fine?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay.
You're correct.
Is that?
Yes, we have an engineer at the, at the label.
Then you have to like, put somebody else speak to the quality of the product.
She, she basically explained to us, like, it's like, you know, you buy this one truck and that truck is good, but you're not getting all the bells and whistles and the things. That's what I'm understanding what she's saying, like, this other one is, because, I mean, that's, there's gonna be a markup with any product. You're always gonna have a scale up, but that doesn't mean what we're getting is trash.
We have three other meetings to get into.
I will say this, so let's just say for giggles, we do white plaster now, okay? Nothing wrong with white plaster.
Right.
And let's say, um, you, you need to replenish the pool in roughly, let's say, ten, fifteen years. Now, I can't forecast what costs are gonna be in ten or fifteen years, but I do know this. The, the, the part that I'm charging you to demo right now, that all goes away on your next plaster job. So there's that.
Okay, I would, I would entertain a motion, so what, of any type.
Well, I would still make the same motion to, that we approve Poolside Concepts to fix the pool flooring at the cost of fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
And I will second that motion.
Have a motion and a second? I'm trying to get you to have your baby.
I'm not worried about my brother.
I can deliver it, girl, I got you. Just let us know when.
There you go.
Okay.
Motion passes unanimously?
I'll call this next agenda item, if you thought that won't span.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda is, oh, excuse me.
Liz, will you send me some references? Just email them to me.
Sure.
Okay, alright. Okay, so they pass, so we can talk, time my, I work with Brandon and get your crew in there ASAP.
Thank you again.
Yeah.
Very much.
Thanks.
Next item is discussion, possible action to set regular meeting dates for 2024. You've seen the attached document, do we have a motion?
Would you do this?
I want you to put a bi-weekly.
Did you move them to bi-weekly?
All right, special days in our.
Calendar dates for next, next calendar year.
I will make a motion that we approve.
Have a motion?
I'll second it.
Have a second.
That looks fine.
Do you, do questions, comments?
I just figured Kyle was missing.
Oh, okay, okay.
Fill the void.
I can zoom in.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go ahead and approve what you're asking.
Let's see, one whole lot of people wherever you're at.
Oh.
Yeah. Looked at the COVID rules.
He's gonna watch this video and he'll kick himself, he wasn't here for this discussion.
Casey, did you?
I did.
Okay. Alright.
That motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is discussion, possible action to, to approve accuracy underground LLC bid to move the waterline east on Highway thirty-three. So I, and maybe you wanna comment in regards to this specifically, but this is in regards to ODOT's project specifically with redesign of Highway thirty-three from basically eighty-one, it's really not eighty-one, it's a little further east, going out towards the county line. It's a requirement of the municipalities to move their own utilities, and we pay for that with the understanding that ODOT is going to upgrade.
ODOT's reimbursing us for this.
They will, a hundred percent?
They are, yes.
Oh, they are? Well, that makes it easy.
That's why, that's why we did it.
I have a motion to approve.
There we go, I second it.
So that's the new law, under five thousand people, they reimburse us a hundred thousand under state statute.
Under my understanding, yes.
I believe that's right, that was just passed not too long ago. So we have a motion?
I have a second.
And second by Commissioner Taylor?
Okay, motion, sorry, I was trying to finish my motion.
Commissioner Fair, motion, and Commissioner Taylor, second. And do you have questions, comments?
My question is just about the Cowan being the engineering people, are we still?
They, they selected, ODOT selected them to do that work on thirty-three.
Yes, yes, that's how that came into play.
Okay.
Yes.
It didn't hurt that they've been the city.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that's.
Okay, we ready?
Yes, ma'am. That's a good deal, that's what the state pays for. Hundred and seventy thousand or something like that?
Yeah.
Literally, anytime you guys bring up something, it's like, this is a grant, this is fully refunded unlike motion.
Right.
Yes.
No discussion needed.
That, that carried unanimously, financial report by Anita.
So you noticed you didn't get your financial report?
She said individually.
Right, sorry, for some reason, that would, would not go in, you guys. It would not go into the, and she tried, and I tried, and we still couldn't get it in. So, sorry.
It was five o'clock Friday and we were going.
Yeah.
Okay, it doesn't look very appealing, but there are reasons that we had a two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar loss for this month in the general fund. We had a hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar check for the intersection at Thirteenth and Will Rogers. Newfield had some electrical and heat and air work done, this is outside of the range.
Back of the hundred-and-forty thousand, that was, that was part of the?
It's that three-part.
So that's the drilling fund?
That's the, no, we paid for this one. This is the paving project we went out for, for bid, Thirteenth Park.
Okay, that was part of the drilling fund?
No, that's not part, we haven't even started that.
That's right, okay, okay.
This is gonna be hard, man, on this one.
Gotcha.
So, and, and they got the intersection done, I think they started working on the parking lot at the park, and we just kinda divided.
They're all done, except for Marx.
Yeah. We had thirty-four thousand working on some electrical and some HVAC at the Newfield Park, the HVAC on the bathrooms because it was a sweat house. And then work comp quarterly was done. So that, those kinda added up to about, almost two-hundred-thousand dollars there, so. Not that I'm making excuses for it, but as you know, our money doesn't always come in evenly throughout the year. So, we do have a three-hundred-and-six-thousand-dollar gain so far for the year, and since we passed a flush budget, more or less, three-hundred thousand is what came back from, or three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, I think it was, came back from self-insurance when that check came in, so. That kinda, this is where that went.
The, the bottom line, though, is, Anita, and I think we need to emphasize this with the commissioners, that all the departments are living within their budgets.
Yes.
We're still in the black and we're balanced. That's, that's why I had no problem funding this pool repair, we had money set aside for that.
Yes. And I don't know if you saw your, the sales tax one, and actually, where the little light blue line, it's kinda landing right about where those other years kinda landed. And actually, if you look at the multi-year, they're all grouped up in that one, little spot. I gotta have my fingers. But, sales tax, actually, the last time I looked at it, you know, those high months that we had was all these coming, people should've paid them months or years before, and it was all catching back up. This was a clean one, the, the one actually here. When I went to look, there was really not a whole lot of back tax or anything weird. Sometimes they'll pay it to use tax and then have to move it to here, sometimes vice versa, they pay it sales tax and it has to be, the tax commission straightens it out, and I really don't understand use tax completely. But that's city side. Public Works, we had a hundred-and-six-thousand-dollar drop. Big part of that is its fault. We don't get, make a whole lot this time of year because we just enjoy those low utility bills that come about. We did do, we had some transformers, we did like twenty-five thousand dollars worth of transformers, which will be reimbursed, they were commercial, and we just, the billing just hasn't, it hasn't hit its cycle on that.
When you said we did those, you mean that we?
We bought them, but then the commercial places that use them, we turn around and bill them.
Right, 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 right. So new businesses or, or replacing of old transformers?
Once they're in there, we replace them on our cost, but when you put a new business in, like a big commercial, the big commercial places, they have to buy their first set of equipment.
Yeah, okay.
Is this, and I'm wondering, is this the one for Dollar Tree?
I'm not sure which one it was for.
Oh, CHS.
CHS, this one was first, not this one. There is one that we bought for CHS, and they did a different, they added on a building out there.
Oh, that's right, yes, yes.
I don't know if this was the whole thing.
Gotcha, yeah.
We did purchase one for CHS, and then I'm not sure about the Dollar Tree or whatever, but we'll probably have to purchase that for that, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
We had some lightening and freshening, some cleaning of screens out at the sewer plant, kinda stuff finishing up the project that was out there. That was around thirty thousand dollars. And once again, work comp, tree trimming, the October financial, this financial is pretty heavy with tree trimming because this is the time of year we do that. So it was like sixteen thousand this month, I think it was more last month even. And, I thought there was one more thing, but I can't remember it now. But yeah, that kinda is where that went. We're still at a hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-dollar gain for the year, so.
We had quite an expense with OMPA, didn't we? Didn't we spend like a quarter of a million dollars, OMPA?
It was two-hundred-and-forty-three, I think, thousand dollars, that was for a power purchase.
Okay, okay.
We don't make it ourselves.
Yeah, well, we do.
We can, but we had to wait for them to ring the phone so we could do that.
You bet.
And then the, the cash page, of course, I always go to my number, the amount that's not encumbered at the end of this month was twelve million point two. So not that, I mean, some of this dedicated, if you look in the, on the sheet, you'll see some of this dedicated to certain funds.
Anita, that, that number is classified, you shouldn't have released it.
That I'm reporting on, a lot of it, a lot of it we don't get to play with during the year.
I know, I know.
Any questions, Anita?
That's, that's what I know. Do I have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I kick you out a weekly Hot Topics letter, and I sent you one last Friday. I don't have much more to add to that. I, I do encourage everyone to join us next Thursday, you know, for our special meeting. There should be some good discussion with that.
Very good. Any questions of Jim in regards to what he sent out last Friday?
And I'm assuming you liked that communication?
I love it.
I do, very much.
Alright, I try to keep you in the loop, there's a number of things that I'm still working on, and I know when I was an elected official, I preferred to get heads up instead of being surprised, so.
I love the idea, just it's more regular, because, just because we meet once a month typically, that, that really, I very much appreciate that.
It also makes sense for you, too, instead of you trying to accumulate all this stuff.
Well, I'm used to having a meeting every two weeks, so that I would give oral briefings, but where we only, like you said, we only meet once a month. I like to keep you in the loop so I don't get too far out ahead of you.
For sure.
It also makes sense so then I can send you emails.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any other, any commissioner comments regarding anything? Mr. Burpo?
Um, no.
Mr. Taylor?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I would say one thing in regards to last Thursday night, I celebrated my birthday well with a great steak.
Sixty-eight, looks good on you.
Golly, that hurts. You're not winning any points here, Commissioner Taylor. I, I, I will let it be known that I'm not sixty-eight. But y'all did a great job, and, and I heard a lot of comments and appreciation for those bonuses and all that, so thank you, thank you guys for putting that on and the way you did it, I think it was a good deal.
How was the birthday cake? Was it good?
Oh, it was awesome, yeah, 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 sugar high.
Glad you enjoyed it.
No, no new business, so I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion and a second?
Debbie, did you say again?
Yes, I said yes.
You want me to say names?
She's so quiet.
Yeah, I'll start doing that.
Sorry, I'll start one.
No, you're good, if she's standing right here, I can hear her. I was looking the other direction, that's probably why. You're fine, you're fine.
She's not one of those hellfire and brimstone kinda?
No, she's not.
You can't have two of those.
Just in certain moments. That's right, Dawn doesn't give me a chance.
I would say it, we can't have two.
Battery's about to die. So, obviously, first item on the public works is a consent docket. You've seen the attachments, any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the consent docket.
Have a motion by Commissioner Taylor?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Burpo?
I'll second that.
I heard you said something.
We have a quorum, we're fine. Commissioner Fair, I guess, abstained. We just approved the consent docket.
Do you want me to vote for you?
Yes, please. Thank you.
You're welcome. There we go.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the discussion, possible action to set regular meeting dates for 2024. We have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the dates for 2024.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Burpo.
Brett, is the pop, is it, it's Public Works. Do you want me to vote for you?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I have to join the other meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
You're good.
Motion carries unanimously. Uh, next item is new business. I see that we have none, so the next item, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
A motion to adjourn?
I second that.
Have a motion by Commissioner Farrar, a second by Commissioner Taylor.
Debbie, are you still in?
Yeah, it won't let me join the meeting though. Are you in the recreational?
No, we have to get out of adjournment. Do you want me to vote for you?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, vote for me.
That's fine.
Don't just interrupt me, that's all, it's okay.
Y'all are rushing me tonight. I'm old.
Motion carries, we're adjourned, Public Works will now enter into Kingfisher Recreational Authority?
Yep.
There we go, so sorry.
Hold on, I gotta go back to the thingy.
Jumped out of it.
I thought we were going home.
Well, we've got two more meetings.
No, we're not doing that one. Where is it? No, I was joking. I was just clicking stuff, that's why I got out of it.
First item on the agenda of the Kingfisher Recreational Authority is the consent docket. Any questions, comments, concerns about the consent docket? If not?
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Farrar, second by Commissioner Burpo.
I fixed it. They're right by each other.
Did we mess up?
Yeah, it'll correct.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
There you go.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the discussion, possible action to set regular meeting dates for 2024.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Farrar, second by Commissioner Taylor. Next item on the agenda is discussion, possible action to approve pool, oh.
Hold on, do you have?
Yeah, I, I.
Hold on.
Technology speeds things up, so.
Okay, there we go.
Okay. Is it there? There it is. Motion, motion carries unanimously. Next item is discussion, possible action to approve, uh, poolside concepts to fix pool flooring at the cost of fifty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Do we want Liz back up? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, poolside concepts for the flooring at a cost of fifty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
And I'll second that.
Have a motion by Commissioner Burpo and a second by Commissioner Taylor.
It closed, but passed. I don't know why it didn't go on.
Passed unanimously?
Yeah, let's hope it saved. There we go.
That carries, so the next item.
Yeah.
Very good. Next item, no, no new business on this one either, uh, so I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
A motion to adjourn?
And I'll second that.
Have a motion by Commissioner Farrar, a second by Commissioner Taylor. No, we're not done, we have one more. Special projects.
Oh, okay.
My favorite.
Sure enough, right there.
Oh, I don't have a thing to go into yet.
Maybe we don't. You sure?
I'll redo it.
Yeah.
It was only giving me few.
There you go. Got the little dude, he popped up there.
Do you think that's what that is?
I don't, I don't, I don't know what it is. First item on the agenda is a consent docket and, uh, it looks like there's no attachments there, so we don't need to do anything with that.
You need to pass your minutes for September.
Minutes of September. I'll entertain a motion for the consent docket.
And minutes?
Yeah, minutes is part of the.
I make a motion that we accept minutes and consent docket.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Burpo.
Brett, since I wasn't a member in September, do I abstain from that? Approval of the, am I allowed to have an opinion on the, because you, if you read it?
With everything.
Sometimes people should abstain from voting, Dawn.
Never!
Sometimes people have their fingers in too many pies, Dawn.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is discussion, possible action to set regular meeting dates for 2024.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Farrar, second by Commissioner Taylor. Motion carries unanimously. No new business, uh, so I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
A motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Farrar, second by Commissioner Taylor.
Still Debbie's thunder.
We are adjourned.